Is there a volunteer from the audience that will keep checking the windows to see when it starts snowing? Will? Give us up, 10-minute updates? All right. Do we have any announcements?
Yes. The Great Kindness Challenge in Springfield kicks off in just five days. Schools across the district as well as the district office will spread kindness throughout the community from January 22nd to the 26th. Check the district website or your school page for more information.
Thank you. Do we have a public to be heard on agenda items only? Board and committee reports, student rep report, Taylor?
Good evening.
Oh, I'm sorry, Deena, you're doing it. I just read the rep first name.
With the second marking period coming to an end on January 25th, the midterms will also be taking place from January 22nd to January 25th for all high schoolers. And also, AP test registrations are open till February 7th. If any further questions regarding the AP tests, please ask Mrs. Bulby or Mrs. Falcone in the FPC. Starting this month in the high school, monthly discussions will be held with Dr. Nugent and Dr. Weinbaum, which will take place in either of the two high school buildings. Two students from each of the four grades will come together and discuss what they would like to see changed and et cetera. This is so the principals can get an in-depth look at all the students.
Thank you. Committee reports. Finance. Finance meeting met January... Finance committee met January 9th at the district office. Was a pretty brief meeting. We focused on going through the monthly reports without getting into grave detail. Where we are currently at this point is we're on target. We are possibly in a fewer budgeted areas trending a little ahead of schedule, which is always good. But then again, as we get later into the budget year, some of the expenditures will catch up to revenues coming in. The other part of the meeting was basically, we had some new board members present and we thought it would be good for Mr. Fink and his staff to go through the budget, the budget process, get into detail about how we do the seven-year rolling budget forecast. Also, we viewed and went through a high-level 20-year maintenance plan, which is capital projects. And also, we talked about the five-year rolling technology plan as well. We got an update from the PESR rate that's been set by the state and they actually, for the first time in, I don't know, Mr. Fink, three or four years, they came in slightly less than what they originally projected. First time, okay, the first time ever. And we also will have the... I did ask about the finalizing of the audit and everything and we should be coming to conclusion with everything in the next month or so and the board will be presented with any dollars that we might have left over from the last year's budget year. I'm not expecting a lot, but any time we have a few dollars left over, you know, that's a good thing. And the meeting adjourned at 7:31. Any questions?
In reference to the PESRs business, have... has their financial situation improved considerably considering what the investment stock market's been doing lately? Have they... has their financial situation improved?
I haven't gotten the official report back from PESRs, but my guess would be that that has certainly helped them a lot. It's probably one reason why they dropped the rate down. Yeah.
They may, you know, we'll probably over the next couple of months, we'll start getting more information as well as far as where the state's at and some of the things going on. But I'm... probably the strength of the market this past... or last year probably made some dent in the overall shortage of the PESR fund. But when you're talking, Jim, I don't know if you remember the exact number, but how many billions that fund is short? Yeah, it's just astronomical. Yeah, it's just crazy. So they'd have to have many, many good years of... for it to catch up. Any other questions? Property met at 7:30, right after the finance meeting. We went through old business. We got an update from the high school project, expansion project from Crab Trees. The drawings are ready to be recorded at Montgomery County Courthouse. Staging area for contractors will be near the performing arts. Additional parking area. Submittal and delivery timelines were discussed. We're basically on target as far as getting the packets out to bid. And our goal from a property committee standpoint is to be coming to the board, the full board, either in the March or April timeline to review bids and decide if and how we're going to proceed forward, keeping in mind that this, it would be the last stop gate as far as a go or no-go decision. We got an update on the high school auditorium lighting. The lighting project will be completed in 119, which is in a few days. Capital reserve plan was... will be projected out to 2035 and will be ready for the property, February property meeting to review. That goes back to the 20-year capital projects plan I just mentioned in the finance meeting that we review as well. Some other projects that are somewhere on the agenda this evening. There's a sewer pit project at Spring City Elementary School. Some of the sewer lines were repaired. The 567 building, Phase 2 roof coating is going to happen the summer of 2018, focusing on the 56 side of the building. Dunes for Cool Steel, et cetera, will be moved to accommodate the repairs. Costs to do this work will be placed on the agenda for approval. Folding partitions, some of our folding partitions have gotten to the point where they have to be replaced and one of them is at Brook Elementary. Quotes and bids will be received. The item will be placed on the board agenda for approval. The state has come out with the new state threshold for bids and quotes. Basically, that's something that we review each year as well because the state basically sets those. One of the things that I believe, it was discussed at property, that moving forward, that the policy is going to be, instead of each year when these thresholds are changed, the policy has to be changed to be in alignment with those thresholds. And from my understanding, policy is going to change the policy to just reflect the state that we will follow the state threshold. So that way, the policy doesn't have to be changed each year. Carpet at the 567 building is scheduled to replace. Costs will come from the maintenance budget. Other business, window replacement at the ninth grade was discussed. It's scheduled to be done as per the capital plan. It will be discussed further as... at a later date as far as where we're at and how that's going. And like I said, there's some additional actionable items that will be on the agenda. LED light replacement at Oaks and Limerick. LED light replacement continuous scheduled in the capital reserve plan. Ram Stadium repairs. Oh, there's Ram Stadium, which is the baseball facility. There's some repairs that are going to be done at that facility and those repairs are split with the Spring City American Legion. Not the Legion, what did it... yeah. Let's... I'm just trying to read these facets. Oaks Chiller is scheduled to be replaced at Oaks Elementary, summer of 2015. Price will be obtained through the U.S. Commodities for chillers as well as the crane is set at. This item will be placed on agenda. The eighth grade fire alarm is outdated and will be replaced. Again, that will be coming out of the capital reserve plan. And finally, the high school roof recoding for the science wing is approximately $720,000. Final numbers will be brought back to property for... to be put forward and for approval from the full board. Tried to go through that pretty quick. Did I lose anybody? Does anybody have any questions? No? Good. Okay. Superintendent's report, Dr. Gooden.
Thank you, Mr. Devella. Just want to... I just want to have a shout-out to the VOTEC. They have a... they hired a new chef, Chef Arnt, two years ago and we had our district office luncheon over there this year and the food was exceptional. They've done an exceptional job over there. Chef Arnt, Rose, just has taken that program just to a whole new level. So I would be remiss if I didn't recognize them and the work they're doing over there. As you know, many of our students are in the programs over there and so there seems to be a really good program in culinary arts. So we certainly appreciated that and we thank them for their hospitality and the wonderful meal that they served. Also, we will be holding a strategic planning meeting for the community and board on January 31st here at the high school. That will be happening and we'll be gathering input on strengths, weaknesses of the district and priorities moving forward. We do that every cycle when the strategic plan is due. And lastly, I was talking to Dr. Roach today and he looked in his... He has this pencil box up on his desk and he looked into it and he says it's a magic pencil box and he assures me that Eagles are winning Sunday.
Did anybody see when the Eagles were playing, some guy running out with a big Eagles flag?
Yeah.
Swore it looked like Dr. Roach.
I thought he was skipping, but...
He was at a sync with the other one.
That guy had a beard.
That guy had a beard. I guess I...
I wish I had my beard last week. It's cold.
I just would like to comment on what Dr. Gooden said about the VOTEC. I had the privilege today to go over to the VOTEC and have a full tour and what they're doing over there. I really got an in-depth look at what they're doing and it's much more than even I knew. So I really commend them for everything they're doing and think that they should be super excited about that sports management program too because I know that the chef is doing well over there from what they say too and you say that. But that sports management program is really something to be excited about. So I'm happy to be joining that board and looking to do some exciting things over there with that group.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Solicitors' report.
There is no report.
While we may keep you, Mark Fitzgerald goes on for hours. Okay. Before the meeting this evening, the board did meet an executive session to discuss personnel item. Meeting minutes, A through C. Does anyone have any questions, comments? Personnel, items A through G.
I have a question, some questions on F. How much money is being collected at the building level that this position would collect?
I'm sorry, Mark, which letter?
On F, this is about the accounts receivable specialist position. They're going to collect, one of the functions is collecting money at the building level, which apparently is not being done well. How much money is that a year that's collected?
Currently, the budget numbers for those are around $375,000 per year. In addition, there's another about $375,000 that's collected through facilities rentals.
And of course, you say... Is facilities rentals coming through the buildings or is that coming directly to the joint?
That does not come through the buildings. That currently is a process that has a lot of tentacles and no clear focus point. And the idea of here would be to bring this to a clear focus point. One person in control to safeguard those assets and ensure that the, number one, the facilities are being rented in accordance with the policy and also that they're being billed in accordance with the policy and therefore collected in accordance with the policy.
Okay, and the $375,000, what is the primarily... how's that broken out? What kind of funds are there?
Things like gated missions, non-athletic extracurricular fees, parking permits, student activities, summer school, cool school tuition, those types of items.
Okay. I'm not really in favor of adding administration when I think that we're doing it and maybe we can improve the process to do it. There's not an educational benefit to that position being done today and if it could be done better, maybe we can do that through process automation and other improvements instead of just hiring somebody that's going to cost the district with benefits $60,000, $70,000.
I might add for the board's information that the business office did reduce two positions since Mr. Fink took over that department and as he's been going through and reconfiguring job duties, making sure that we're running as efficiently as possible, he did come to me approximately six months ago and say, "We're going to need to add this position back." But... so that's just for the board's information that we did reduce those two positions over the two years you've been here? And he's, you know, indicated that we needed to bring that back.
Isn't that a net one position because we hired an accountant? I thought that the secretary retired and we replaced that position with a professional person and the justification was that we could better use the money from those positions for a professional person? So the justification was getting rid of two positions for hiring a higher person?
I'm not sure what salary was. I'm not sure it was a higher person though. No, the district replaced a secretary position with an accountant position. That's correct. In addition to that, the department eliminated two other positions.
Which positions were they?
They were a secretary, another secretary and what was... I don't remember what came to...
Census?
Census. Census and they had a small portion of child accounting and a small portion of facilities.
And how did we do the work for the... how did that work get done when they left? Was it unnecessary or was it done?
Some of it was unnecessary. Some of it was duplication of duties, which we were able to do. Some of it was process. As you pointed out, we were able to make some process changes to eliminate some of the things that were being done or at least some of the time that was being used for those positions. But I will say, Dr. Gooden said we'd like to bring one of those back. I want to be clear that it's a different skill set that I'm looking for in this position than what we had prior.
Would this position be covering the facilities going forward as in who's using the facilities and managing that income that's coming in? Or who... because that's one of the things that we're working on right now. So I would like to know, is that person... would that person...
Yeah, that person would be the focal point in going through that policy to ensure that, you know, from the front end, a third party or even an internal party is following the policy that is currently in place and the new one that's being drafted. And then following, making sure that that all follows through with all the proper checks and balances to ensure that the policy is being followed, that all the paperwork that's necessary on file for liability reasons. And then ultimately, of course, that the correct bills go out and are collected on.
I just want to clarify, if I said administrator, I meant administration, not the person would be administrator.
I just wanted to draw attention to Mr. Cooper's request for retirement. I tried to talk him out of it earlier, but it seems like he's determined to do that and I just wanted to acknowledge the fine work that he's done over all these years here and we will certainly miss his expertise and I hope we can find somebody to fill his rather large shoes. So all the best to Mr. Cooper and it's going to be tough to replace you and you've... we really thank you for your hard work.
Yeah, that's a... he plays a very important position in the district, a very valuable person. Do we have... have we formulated a plan to replace him yet?
We will be in the process. Once the... once Mr. Cooper and the board accepts his resignation, we will go ahead and post that position. We are already meeting, I am already meeting with Mr. Cooper, Mr. Ziegler, Ms. Whitmore and Mr. Carson to make sure that all the projects that are on the schedule are getting done and that there's a smooth transition. So we're already planning for that.
And I would suggest more than just posting, that position is actually trying to recruit somebody that we see out in the Philadelphia area that is doing that role somewhere else and maybe go after somebody that's successful there as opposed to just posting and hoping they apply.
Yeah, we'll try to steal somebody else.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, finance, A through G. Property, A through H. Conferences and workshops, A through G. Other business, A through F.
Couple of comments or questions on A regarding the changing of the trip to Florida from a flight to a bus ride. Seeing that that's a very short trip and that we're sending kids to compete, if they're going to be in a bus traveling overnight, that's a good 20-hour or so or more ride on a bus. If they're going to get there, I would think it'd take a couple of days to recover and they're not going to be at their top, as far as being able to perform after being on a bus. I can't imagine getting much sleep on a bus. I've made that trip a few times and it's very grueling and for $200, it sounds like if we want our kids to perform well, that they'd be better served flying than taking a bus. I don't know how the parents and the students feel, but I sure would not like to be on that bus traveling for a five-day trip where two of them, you're in a bus. And I don't know if you factor in the cost of meals, but you're going to have to stop for meals probably three times each way, which will eat into that $200 saving. So I don't know if all the parents and students are on board with that, but I think it's... it doesn't make a lot of sense to drive that. And in March, you can get bad weather, you get freezing rain. I mean, the South is notorious for those kinds of storms in March and that adds another complication or danger for our students.
I agree with you, Mark, and I guess our option is to vote against the revised overnight trip.
Hold on. I'm not sure that's our call.
Right.
How they travel down there. That's the band and boosters who make those decisions.
Well, we're... what we're voting on is the cost to the district related to the substitute coverage.
I mean, I understand, I appreciate your comments, but...
But we're approving the... we approved the trip because we approved the trip based on a set of circumstances and the set of circumstances, they were going to fly down there, not a set of circumstances of the fact that we have three substitutes that we have to pay or whatever the number of chaperones we have to send down there. It's... otherwise, it's... if we didn't have, it's our students going there, they're missing school. It's sanctioned by the school. So we're approving more than just paying for the substitutes. We approve that trip based on the circumstances of flying down there for a five-day trip. So I think it's... it doesn't make a lot of sense for those kids to drive down there in a bus and be tired and not perform well and not even enjoy the trip because they travel on a bus for 20 some hours.
I think there's also a safety issue of taking a bus down there.
I think it brings us to number B or to letter B because we did have a discussion at this table at the end of last year. There's a student who's afraid of flying. So we agreed that we could, we would allow that and yet it looks like B is that she's going to be personally transported, so not traveling with...
This is a different student?
It's different.
This is a different student, yes.
Okay, so that other student would be traveling with them on the bus?
Correct. And what they'll do is the bus would leave in the evening and they would drive all... and if you've done this before, they'll travel all night and then they get there, they get down to Florida to Orlando in the morning and then they do the reverse on the way back.
There's no way you'd leave at night on Wednesday and get to Orlando in the morning unless you're doing about 120.
Well, actually, I've done it before.
It's 900 miles. Do the math.
Whatever time in the afternoon they're leaving, they're leaving in the afternoon and then they drive all night and get there in the morning, so.
And if there's an accident, is the school district liable for that accident? Because it's a school trip. Do we have any liability?
Well, the same, the same would hold true if they flew. We applied if there's an accident.
Well, we were saying while we're approving as substitutes, but we actually are more than that.
I understand. You're... you've approved the trip and they made the decision to not fly, but for whatever reason, and I'm not sure what that reason is.
I think it's just a number of people.
I think that's what the issue was.
And the parents are on board with that.
Yes.
I saw one student shaking their head like, I'm not going to say who it was.
I'm not sure how many. Dr. Roach, you remember how many students are going down there?
I don't know offhand. I mean...
It's over...
I know I recently met with Mr. Jones, Mrs. O'Day and Mrs. McGranahan on issues related to the trip, you know, medications and all that kind of stuff to make sure everything went smoothly and there was at no point a conversation about anyone being upset about driving or in that side of things. For whatever reason, the decision was made to change. It could be working with an agency or whoever they've partnered with and that's the way it's set up. And like somebody said, that the musical association was on board and supportive and chaperones are in place and everything's ready to go. So if that's the decision, then we can either get more information for you for next week or make a decision and then I guess we'll...
I think the main change was for logistics of the number of people going and the planes that would be required and, you know...
It's got to be over 200, easy.
Yeah.
I mean, no doubt.
How many buses is 200 then? One on one bus?
Probably four. I mean, 50, 60 on a bus, on one of the charter buses. I mean, I'm making an assumption, but...
I think it's probably closer to, it's probably closer to 300. I mean, when you put together your band, your vocal and your, I don't know if instrumental is going, if the orchestra is going, but I believe they are.
We can find out that count for you folks. We can do that.
And then there would be a couple trailers as well with equipment and instruments.
Any other questions? Any other board comment? Item B? Are we going to discuss item B or is that passed? Other business? I asked if there was any other comment, so if you want to bring up item B. This is tied back to the trip? No?
This is, no, this is a separate, completely separate entity. This is for students who qualify to compete, who qualify for state band.
B, B as in boy?
Correct. That's B. This has to do with a student having a medical issue, not able to ride a bus for 15, 16 hours and the parents have requested to be able to fly them down there? They're going to fly down to Orlando with their child?
Our legal exposure is what, by...
We've already run this through legal. We just need to approve a waiver to allow them to do it. We have a waiver for them that Fox prepared with.
Okay. So Clint, you came in at the right time. So I'm going to put you on the spot. There seems to be some board concern about you changing your approach to going down to Orlando from flying to taking buses. Could you provide some information related to that?
Yeah, the reason we switched is we... the list was coming.
Clint, you want to just state your name and what your...
I'm sorry, Clint Federman from Limerick Township.
And what's your role?
I'm president of music association, running the trip to Disney with Seth, Yvonne and Emily.
Thank you.
I did all the research with, working with travel agent and we normally would fly, which is what we do with this trip, but we have over 300 people who are signing up for this trip. And when you get to that kind of size, and we're traveling in March, and in March, what happens is all of the charters are getting used up by 64 basketball teams because of March Madness. So a lot of those charter flights are not becoming available and the trip costs were going over $1,600, which was getting to be ridiculous because there's a lot of people who just couldn't afford, probably including me, $1,600 to go to Disney World for a band festival. So working with the travel agent, also the company that's going to move us, what normally happens with groups over 300 is they rarely fly, they always take a bus. So I'm thinking, we got to go on seven buses to Disney World because it was just, the cost was just exorbitant. It was too high.
What's the estimated time of travel?
Estimated time is around 20 hours, but that's with stops. That's with switching drivers and we're also going to stop at our Golden Corral and get, you know, meals and things like that. We got to go to Golden Corral on a trip like this.
And how's the parent as far as... And how's the parents as far as approval? Are they, are they fine with the change itinerary?
Yeah, ninety-eight percent are fine with the change. The ones who, who are like, I can't possibly fly, I think we've pointed to Dr. Gooden's direction and also Dr. Nugent saying, whatever they say is fine with us. And we have a couple of parents who are also with back issues who are flying and will meet us down there and will be chaperoning with us. Because I need people on the ground in Disney World to help us with the kids. We're fine on the buses. We can have two parents on the buses and we're fine. But in, in Disney World is where we need the help and that's fine if it, it's cool with me.
Have you done a trip like this before?
Yeah, we've been, oh yeah, Nashville. Nashville, we took five buses to Nashville. That was an eighteen-hour trip.
And what was the, how were the kids when you got there?
Tired.
Other, and then how, how fast did they bounce back?
When we got to Nashville, we stayed down there and the day, we had the rest of the day to recoup and then we were off and running.
And how many days is the trip?
It's going to be the fifteenth through the coming home the nineteenth. So we're leaving on the fourteenth. I don't know what time yet because Disney World doesn't give us a schedule until six weeks out, which is February first. So I don't know right now if, and this is why we haven't finalized the cost of the trip, because I don't know if I've got to hire new coaches or more coaches when we get there because we'll be beyond our, our driver's times. They have a certain amount of times they can drive and be on duty. Where I may need to move a choral group to a performance venue. And I mean, I may need to hire some coaches down there. So that's why we haven't finalized the, the cost, but I don't expect it to go over 1,250 bucks. I don't expect it to go over 1,200 hours.
So I guess the main concern of the board is a four-day trip and you're, and two of the four days is you're traveling.
We're on the bus.
On the bus.
Yeah. That's how we do it.
That seems to be the, the main concern from the board perspective.
Okay.
And the impact that that could have on the students and as well as the impact educationally when you get back and how.
We'll be back on Monday around six o'clock somewhere near evening. So they'll have plenty of time to recoup for the, for Tuesday.
So would you anticipate like a caravan of six buses going down?
And one truck. Yes.
And one truck.
Yeah, well, because we'll have equipment and uniforms and things like that on the truck.
Well, he's, so if anybody, if any board has any questions, he's the man to ask.
I think he answered my questions, just that I, I'm concerned that the students won't be at their peak performance after traveling 20 hours in a bus and not really sleeping. And that's, that would be my, that's my.
Their performances in Nashville, we, they were awesome. They were awesome. Our kids are adorable. They do really well. We took almost every award in Nashville and that was after, you know, eighteen-hour, fifteen-hour bus ride. But I expect them to do very well on this one. And our choral kids, last time we went to Disney World, got off the airplane, got on two buses. We drove from Tampa into Orlando, got off those buses, went and competed and they were awesome. They were awesome. So our kids are very, very good.
And that's pretty, I mean, that's pretty common with this group anyway, correct? I mean, they travel a lot. All of, all of these ensembles travel a lot.
They do travel a lot.
They, you know, they're used to being in a bus. They're used to, you know, waiting their time, getting off that bus and getting into action.
Moving equipment. Everybody's got a job.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
I'll show you to show up here late. So going back, any other board comment? Public to be heard.
Sorry, I just had one thing.
I already moved on.
I don't care. Just one thing, the legislative meeting is tomorrow night at MCIU. But one thing did come out today and it's just a heads up with regards to Senate Bill Two. So I just wanted to kind of throw it out there briefly. It's with regards to education savings account bill and allowing folks to utilize, and I guess the gist of it, and please jump in, the gist of it is really more allowance of utilizing the 529 plans for private education. PSBA has also sent out an, an action request for boards, you know, to, to stand up against this. So I just wanted to throw it out. I don't have a lot of background and information. I'm sure I'll get more tomorrow, but wanted to give the heads up. They, they are anticipating a vote within the next week or two. So it's something that we want to take a look at maybe quickly.
I think there's two bills. One's a fed, one's a, it's federal and that relates to 529. The two is regarding the accounts that will be set up for students of low achieving districts, 15% of the bottom 15%. So what, that wouldn't.
I merged the two, yes.
The PSBA wants the districts to come out against that, but it doesn't affect us because we're not in the bottom 15%. So.
The bill is really, the bill is really taking one more step towards school vouchers. And short-term, Mark, I agree with you, it doesn't impact Springfield. Long-term, depending on where school vouchers go, that's where districts like Springfield could or could not be affected. And that's been, that's been the question all along with school vouchers is that if you have students that are going to come into your district and are only bringing fifteen, or they're bringing a percentage of money from their existing dish, but what they're bringing with them doesn't cover the full student cost. And if it doesn't cover the full student cost, who makes up the difference?
Yeah, but I think that bill was regarding private schools, not public schools.
What I'm saying is that this is, this is just one of the first steps towards school vouchers. So it's just going to be interesting to follow. So I think the reason why PSBA is saying to come out against is because they recognize that although it doesn't impact majority of public schools and all that from, from our perspective, it is just one more step towards where school vouchers are going. Any other comment? Going back to public to be heard. Clint, you have anything else you want to ask? You're good? All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Meeting adjourned.